Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, December 8, 2015, at 7:30 in the evening. And I think it was a dark and stormy night. And thank you, everybody, for being here. We have a bunch of stuff to do tonight, and so we're going to move expeditiously forward in council. I'm going to add in a couple of things tonight. We're going to add an action item under 9B tonight, which is Teams for Contract Ratification. We also have added an oath of office for a police officer. We'll be doing that shortly. And so we're going to move along quickly. And if some folks aren't here, I know some people are in route, we may juggle the calendar and the agenda just a little bit so that it makes everything work. That made sense to me. I'm not sure if it sounded very good, but it worked. So anyway, let the record show that all the council members are here, and they survived Thanksgiving and their holiday season. We have minutes from December, the regular session and the work session, and those make with everybody's approval.
Move to approve.
Motion second. All favors signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Under visitor presentation, the first person listed is Margaret Tomlinson from the Ash Creek Arts Center. I told you I'd have you right up. Good evening and welcome to the city council.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Margaret Tomlinson. Most of you know me. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council this evening on behalf of the Ash Creek Arts Center. We're very grateful to the mayor, city councilors, and city staff for making the decision two years ago to let us use some vacant space in the old public library building to start the arts center. It's been a tremendous experience developing our program of arts classes and activities, and we're thrilled by the progress we've taken, especially over the past year since our nonprofit status was recognized by the IRS. We received four grants this year, which made it possible for us to present arts activities at more community events and begin paying the teachers who lead our classes and activities. We're grateful to the Polk County Cultural Coalition, the local Rotary Club, the Oregon Community Foundation, and the Umpqua Bank Chartered Foundation for supporting our work. Up to 40 children and parents now attend our monthly Saturday family art classes. This year's summer art camp filled almost as soon as we announced it. Our art projects at community events have been enjoyed by hundreds of people. At this year's community festival alone, over 100 children and adults enjoyed our face painting activity and learned to make brightly colored tissue paper flowers. Now, I'm going to say something that may surprise you if you're familiar with the cliche of the starving arts. Art generates prosperity. In your agenda packets is the story of Joseph, Oregon, a city of about 1,000 residents, which has dramatically increased its economic vitality by cultivating the arts. Over the course of about two decades, a period which included a major recession, visitors' spending in the county more than doubled, and the number of arts-related jobs almost tripled as they remodeled their Main Street, opened downtown art galleries, and turned the long vacant Fang Building into an art center. Independence is ahead of the game, having already made some similar improvements. And Joseph is not the only place where the arts have helped the city thrive economically. Other examples of many are listed in the written report. Foundations that support the arts are well aware of the connection between the arts and community prosperity. A number of them have developed programs to help communities and arts organizations partner together to build economic vitality. One of the most important of these is ArtPlace, a consortium of foundations that came together a few years ago to support major projects in which the arts would play a central role in addressing a variety of community needs, including economic development. Oregon is an area of special interest to ArtPlace, and a portion of their grant money each year is preserved for Oregon projects. You may recall that two years ago, when the arts center was just a month old, we submitted a letter of intent to ArtPlace to apply for funding to renovate a building. We are now in a much stronger position to ask for ArtPlace funding and have more options for finding a larger space needed to accommodate the growth in the arts center's programs. We look forward to continuing to work with the city to serve our community. Over the coming months, we hope to share with you a variety of ideas about how we can work together to build an economically strong and creatively vibrant future. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the kind of time, and I really appreciate it. The report that was provided in our packet, it was very inclusive and provided lots of information. I really appreciate it, and congratulations on your collective success.
Thank you so much. It's very exciting. And thank you. Thank you.
Agreed. Is there any other visitor comment? Anybody else has anything else they need to say at this point? Saying no rush to the microphone, we're going to continue moving forward. Councilors, in your packet, you have on page 12, you see that we need to appoint a municipal judge. After interviews, I'm recommending that Stan Butterfield, who is in the audience tonight, who has been our prosecutor for a number of years, is a person that I'm recommending to you for appointment as the judge for our community. Anybody have any questions or anything? This is one of the positions that we do appoint, one of the others, the city manager.
I think my question might be a good judgment.
Thank you.
Do we all agree on that?
And Mr. Butterfield's been around for a while, so he has a little bit of knowledge about Polk County.
There you go.
Knows a little bit about this community.
There you go.
A bit, yeah. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Stan Butterfield as municipal judge.
Second. Have a motion, second is our discussion. Hearing no discussion, all favors signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations, Judge.
Well, thank you.
If you'd like to.
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you. This is a real opportunity that I feel a distinct honor being served here. And I started in the municipal court for independence in 2004, defending some folks, and then went back to my original part of the law, as far as law enforcement goes. And I'm glad to be in the court here and to have the opportunity. I also wanted to thank you because now my secretaries have a new way of teasing me. Every time I entered the room, they'd walk the stand-up. Anyway, thank you so much for this honor, and I appreciate it. If you have a talented mayor and a city manager and police chief that could cross-examine in a court, I learned after my interview process, they would do quite well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you both coming in. Thank you so much. Moving forward, I think Keith Mason, I think you're the next person up, please.
Mr. Mayor, council. Apologize, we just ran in. We've been out on a search warrant, and we're going to be leaving as soon as we're done here. Pull the ties back off and get back to work. So, I have a distinct honor today to introduce a new police officer to you. Her name is Jill Thistle. Jill started with the city in 2004 as an intern in our police department. She started full-time work with us as an operations assistant in 2005. That's the person that answers the phone, does a lot of records, tech stuff, and answers a lot of questions that come. She became a reserve officer with us in 2006, ended up leaving full-time employment so that she could start a family, maybe you'll see in the audience behind me, and ended up applying for and getting this full-time job starting December 1st. Jill is Mary Tomite. She's a teacher at Central High School, and you may know him from the many community events that he's involved with, and they are raising their two sons here in the community. Some of the special skills that Jill brings to the department include employment with the Oregon Peace Officers Association. She is a training coordinator with that group and has gone around the state putting on law enforcement trainings for that association. That's given her the opportunity to make a lot of valuable contacts in other departments, as well as attend a lot of training that our officers honestly just don't have the ability to get out and take, but as the coordinator, she often gets to sit in on those classes. So, I look today, and she has 550 training hours on her data pile. So, that's actually really, really good for what we're used to doing. Around our office, Jill's very well-known for her organizational skills. We have at times considered her an analyst because she can find anyone and do link analysis very well, put people and places together, and helps solve cases. As a reserve, she was our representative on sanction court, which leads her to the support group. She did that as a volunteer effort for many years and was our only representative that came around now. Currently, she's in field training. She started several months ago as a part-time officer with us, taking field training at the part-time status so she could go along. She's scheduled to start the police academy for 16 weeks in January, and we're excited to get her back and solo on the road. So, Jill, if you could come forward. Mayor, would you be the owner of coming down and sorry, I'm running quick.
Do it this way, so you can face the camera. Ready your hand. I, Jill Thistle.
I, Jill Thistle.
Having been duly appointed by the chief of police.
Having been duly appointed by the chief of police.
San oath.
San oath.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
State of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
And the charters and ordinance of the City of Independence.
And the charters and ordinance of the City of Independence.
I will perform the duties of the office of police officer.
I will perform the duties of police officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So, help you guys. Congratulations. Somebody will help us on the pictures. So, we're going to do the picture thing. Come on, guys, you guys can come up too. There you go. There you go. Carrie, you want to? This is something that's really special. I love the fact that we--
Say, Santa. Enza.
We're really glad to be able to have the opportunity to have you with us and to be able to do this in front of council. Welcome.
Thank you. We're happy to hear you.
Thank you. I know you guys have to go out and get the bag deck. Okay, I'll let you guys take care of the paperwork. Mr. Klein, I think this is your turn.
Mayor, councilors, and councilmen, thank you. So, I don't normally scold people I work for, but I have to say, effectively made me work low, quite a percentage, by firing the city prosecutor and stealing him as the judge for this. Just so you know, so we have to want to recruit without a city prosecutor. I think you got a great one there. I think he did really very well. So, let's see, a couple different things. So, our food hub has taken a little bit of a shot. We did not survive the Rachel Solutions deprocess as lots go around, so that was a bit of a disappointment. We're not going to give up. We have, we had a separate offer to help us put together a business plan, so we're going to pursue that, and we'll see if we can find some other partners, stakeholders on this project.
Had the opportunity to attend the Sugar Grove Central High School. I thought that was really interesting, and our department was very much involved in putting that on. And, you know, it was an opportunity to debrief with the chief, and it was, a lot was learned from that effort, as much as anything I have to put on the grills. So, that was a worthwhile effort, and I'm sure there'll be more over time, but it was definitely, you know, it was an eye-opener for a lot of us in self-reservory. Also had the opportunity to attend a meeting with CART, the regional transit. So, they have a proposal in to make some changes to services. It's a no-cost proposal because they don't have any new money. So, that proposal, it was for changing the service a little bit around here, and I'm not sure that, you know, the reaction was sort of lukewarm. So, I think that's going to, I think they'll be coming back to you at some point. We asked them to have us talk about the proposal that they had, probably in January or February, I think. But, I mean, in some ways, it's an improvement to services. It adds a line, but in other ways, it's a little bit of a drop-off in services, where you lose some of the stocks, and I'm not sure the trade-off works very well. So, anyway, I'll have them come back and give a little more detail in a future meeting. Catch up on Valley Concrete. We had, and Councilor Lodge was able to join us for this meeting today. We met with our review committee. We saw, we listened to two very strong presentations, about an hour and a half each, and we have left with a team. I think we reached consensus around one team. We're going to do the background work on them, but I think we all felt very much that they were, they understood the values of the community very well. They understood the values of the startup downtown, how to create a sort of a flowing project. And I think they just provided a lot of information, detail, and a lot of very, very thoughtful proposals to us. So, we will work with them to get to a memorandum of understanding. We will come to you with some more information and introduce them to the council when we start getting, when it looks like we're going to get to yes on everything in terms of a path forward.
Do you have a, you, what would you anticipate that kind of a timeline for this first?
Yeah, and they gave us actually a very detailed schedule of events that would take us through phases of development, phases of negotiation alike. I think it would probably, I think it's a little ambitious. I think getting to the first phase, which is completion of the memorandum of understanding, probably two, maybe three months.
Okay.
So, that's what we're looking at. Sometime in late spring, you actually get to the point of entertaining and developing agreement. There's a lot of other pieces to it. We have a very extensive schedule of events. They furnished us. It was an optimistic schedule. They want to start with an optimistic plan, so, but, you know, to call it a world example. But we're current with you, both have taken so far, and we will bring them forward and introduce them to you. We've also commissioned an appraisal on the project, on the property, so we'll get that information to you when that's done. That's supposed to be done by the end of the month, and so I'll just, I'll share that information with you in a coming meeting when we get that, so you'll have an understanding of what, you know, first of all, we put into, what the property is worth.
Had our first meeting with Local Government Personnel Institute. That was, we covered a lot of ground. We looked at the applications for executive director. I think that was some good applications. We're down to six that we'll be interviewing, and that'll happen in about two weeks. So, hopefully, we'll be able to move quickly on that. We also reviewed the finances. Basically, it's a pretty ugly situation. They have somewhere between a year and two years before they run out of cash at the current rate of spending, so we need to, whatever gets on the ground there is kind of their work kind of form in terms of creating, you know, turning that operation around. So, that's important to us as a community. They first launch services to the city, through bargaining and summary conversation analysis and all that.
For those that don't remember, that's the Local Government Personnel Institute. That's a statewide organization that used her bump for as appointed by the LOC.
Right. Thank you very much. Yeah, I should clarify that.
As usual, I fish around for the things that folks want to report out to council about these meetings, and I've had a pretty big hit out of the IT department, so I'll go ahead and share some of the things that they wanted me to share with you. I didn't get them all. And I've also, I have also summarized this, so, I didn't summarize it so far that I don't understand what I actually looked at in his notes. First off, if you'll see in our digital signage out there in the down front of the building, they are now, there's far more information. We have cloud-based digital signage program, and it's, it's being used at all the different public venues. So, for instance, down in the event center, you can see what's going on on any given day. If you, as you stand down there, you'll see what's scheduled and a lot of other information. We're just starting to use it, but it's going to evolve and become a very useful system to folks as they visit us. Wi-Fi available in the park is getting broad usage, broader usage all the time, and more people down there are taking advantage of that, and we think it's an early visitation to our park. We spent a little bit of money, not much, opening up the Wi-Fi system down there. So, that's a useful add to the public. We will be launching our Public Works App, our Indy, excuse me, not our Public Works, our Indy Works App in July, and that's a, that'll be a downloadable app for, for whatever device you're carrying, and will allow you to interact with the city in a number of different ways. If you see a pothole that you want the city to know about, you can take a picture and shoot an office, and you'll get continuous, you'll get regular updates as to what's going on in terms of service supplies. Hopefully, eventually, you'll see the pothole filled. You'll be able to tune into things that are going on in the community. There'll be a lot of different, a lot of utility with this program, so we'll give you a demo run on that. I think you'll just leave it December meeting, if not December meeting, January. Second meeting in December. So, we've added, if you're watching our website, we have two more departments on the website that we've had on, so that you do check in on those. Our information technology department is up. We have a lot more information on economic development than the event center that we used to have, and we've also added a human resources function up there. So, if you're looking for various human resource documents, jobs, the like, that'll be online. That is online now. Our library is connected through wireless to the system, to the central network, which greatly increases the efficiencies there. So, that's been a good improvement. I think you're happy with that. Couple innovation projects that we are involved with and moving along. One with Metrographists, a Fortune 500 company, and there's another one, I don't have that written down, but getting us recognition with Portland Business Journal and Washington Post, and our issue coming out very shortly, if it's not already. Shortly.
It is.
We're looking for that. That was a, we've been told that that's coming out soon.
So, excuse me, David, would that be a second article in the Business Journal?
No, that's the one that you've seen in your packets. And we've got a lot of other articles that actually have come out, but that was a little more significant pieces in a while. And finally, we have been working with Verizon, utilizing, looking at their new private IT network for our projects. We're talking to them to come and test it for 5G cellular technology, which can offer gigabit speed over cellular connections. So, that's a conversation that's ongoing now. They took notice of us through that article that was in the Business Journal, so that's how they became aware of us. We've done quite a bit of response from that piece, so the word keeps spreading, so, there you go. That's my half for this evening.
Questions for the manager?
Just a couple. The current schedule that you mentioned, the changes they're having, are those printed anywhere? I know several people use that.
Well, it hasn't changed yet.
Okay.
It's supposed to go to the whole, we don't have the card sport for acceptance. It's changed.
Okay, so it's not, it's not available to look at ahead of?
I don't know if they have proposals online on their, on their web site or not. I don't recall them saying whether they did or didn't.
But they'll be coming to us before they do anything.
I'm hoping they come to us before. I mean, that wasn't built into their consulting budget. We asked that, you know, we specifically asked that they do that, so, you know, that would require a car system or to make that happen, but they understood the sensitivity.
And just FYI, we have a 5G, is that what you were saying about Verizon?
5G cellular network.
We have 5G operating at Lyleman Studios.
Jason. Do some questions? Okay, and thank you very much. We have the MyNet bond payment. We have that in front of us, and I think we have Don Patton from, is Mr. Patton carrying this tonight, or who is the, or Mr. Klein, you wrote the memo? How do we find?
Well, we, I believe either Mark Tanis or Don Patton are here to, I don't know if they're here to make a presentation or to answer questions.
I think there's a bank have questions.
We've reviewed that internally, and it's, and it's about what we expected.
Okay. So, do we have any council members who have pack information in your packet on a loan payment, a loan arrangement with MyNet to take care of the amount that needs to be paid? Do you have any questions for staff or the folks from MyNet tonight?
I guess there was a, no, actually, I think part of email chain that had mentioned that there was some discussion at the MyNet board, a lengthy discussion at the MyNet board meeting about this. Was there some significant things from that board meeting that we should be aware of?
I don't think we discussed anything that we were not already aware of in terms of programming and the budget, you know, what we're, what we're going to be expected to contribute to this, so. But the board is aware of it. I think we're really making a big move in the area of marketing and looking at addresses in the communities that are currently not MyNet subscribers.
I guess the only thing that I'll say about it is that, just in looking this, and I'm looking with a little bit of concern, because as I look at past years, it seems like we're kind of trending upward in what the cities are actually contributing based on past years and our budget, right? And this one payment is actually going to go over our budget for the, for the payment towards MyNet's debt. So, I just wanted to voice some concern and wondered if there was very specific ways of addressing that, or what we can look to in the future, if we know anything about, any ideas about what might happen for the June payment, I believe is the next payment? Any projection for that, or?
Yeah, I'm Governor Manager, Brian, and I'll take your second question first. I'm quite certain we are prepared to give an analysis on the June, June debt payment at this point in time. Am I speaking correctly for you, Mark?
No, we wouldn't do any analysis until sometime this spring. However, having said that, based upon what occurred for the current MyNet contribution to this particular payment, you know, I've projected out both in terms of what's in the budget and the basis upon which the company is operating and producing cash every month, and my best estimate at this point in time, but I'm going to underscore that it's an estimate, because what could actually occur over the next six months could be different than what I'm projecting now. But based upon that, my projection is, is that of the approximate $880,000 of total MyNet debt that relates to Independence for the current year, it appears that Independence is probably going to have to pay about $514,000 of that. The remainder will be contributed by MyNet. What that correlates to is that of the total current fiscal year annual payment, Independence will be paying approximately 58% of it, and MyNet will be paying 42% of it. Our goal has been 50% of it, but we'll have to see what, how things bear out over the next six months, but that's what I can share for you as my, my best projection at this point in time.
You're welcome. Additional questions? Yes, sir.
Tom had another question. Well, it's initial request.
I was just concerned about, about--
Exactly.
--trend.
Right, and I'm going to be answering that now.
Excuse me.
No, I'm sorry, councilor, Tom, I apologize.
It's okay, Don.
I prefer Cheryl, thank you. We've recently undergone a tremendous amount of very deliberate and accurate analysis of what in our traditional suite of products is yet available to MyNet to obtain, whether it's aggressively or more casually. We would be happy to discuss those numbers with you at any time and set an agreement with me and we'll do them. With that being said, the sole focus on MyNet, whether it's between Mark and myself when we meet with our finance committee, with our board of directors now, and with our technical and marketing committees, is finding sources of new revenue that's outside of what we now feel we can accurately forecast in our traditional suite of products.
Additional questions?
Please. I was handed a note by our city attorney, and she doesn't have a microphone, but you may want to--
Yes.
--feel comfortable now.
Right, before we, yeah, this is just the report. So, if there are no other questions, okay? Thank you, Mr. Patton. Appreciate that. Before we get into the discussion of the bond payment, do you have an announcement to make about your employment, your--
Oh. Oh, yes, I do. Thank you.
Right.
I need to disclose that I am an employee of MyNet, and may I stay at the desk, or do I need to recuse myself?
Counselors?
Just close your eyes.
Okay.
Without objection, I'm going to just, Marilyn's just going to be here. Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
Okay, I guess I'm going to recognize our city attorney, guess please.
Hi, thank you. For the record, clarify if you're disclosing an actual conflict and you won't be voting, or a potential conflict?
This is a potential conflict. But in order to, I believe that's correct, yes.
You guys, so?
I'm, I'm fine with that. Just know that you can declare an actual in excess of caution, and it helps if ever there's a question.
Would that be preferable in this case?
I think personally, for you and me.
All right, then I declare an actual conflict of interest, and I'll scoot my chair back.
Okay. Okay, so we have that, you have that on the record? Okay, we now have in front of us a bond payment request in your packet. You have the explanation, you have the detail. Is there, is there a discussion before we go to motions? If not, this isn't action items. We, this has been included in our budget for, and we've had conversations about this over the last quite some time.
I'll make a motion.
Please do.
I have, I move to approve the MyNet bond payment agreement agreement as requested.
Second. I have a motion, second, there's further discussion. Hearing no discussion, all if they are signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in this evening. No movement, stay dry.
Will do. Can we take a ladder, I don't think?
There you go.
Can I come back and play?
Yes, you may. Thank you. We're going to move forward with new business. We have to have a public hearing on the MyNet grant, excuse me, the merit grant closeout. Karen, I think you have some required language we have to read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Independence received a 2014 Community Development Block Grant from the Oregon Development Department Infrastructure and Finance Authority for a regional Mariupol and Manville, Manville micro enterprise project. Citizen participation is required by Section 104A2 of the Housing and Community Development Act, HCPA, and by federal regulation at 24 CFR Part 57.486, which requires each applicant, in this case, the City of Independence, to provide evidence and certify completion of a seventh element citizen participation plan. The applicant, applicants must provide for a minimum of two public hearings, each at different stages of the project, for community citizen views and responding to questions. Nearing must cover community development and housing needs, development of proposed activities, and review of program performance. Prior to closeout of a project, the city must hold a second hearing in order to review the results of the project as citizens and to take notice about the recipient's performance as part of the grant closeout process. The purpose of this public hearing is for the city council to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about the project. Notice of this hearing has been published and/or posted in accordance with local practice and the requirements of the CDVT citizen participation guidelines.
Clear public hearing, open. Does anybody have anything to say about this? Please, this is. Good evening, welcome to City Council.
Thank you. Karen, how's it going? Karen, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you and write in behalf of Merritt. Merritt has appreciated your partnership over the years that we've worked together and the results that have come from that partnership. In your packets, I believe you have a page, two sides of page there. What I want to talk to you about is the service that we provided was a series of 10 business startup classes in Independence, McMenville, and Woodburn. The project requirement was that we had a minimum of 51% of participants be below moderate income to satisfy the national objective of the Community Development Block Grant. The project will exceed this target. 92% of the participants are in the targeted income bracket. The project was a complete, was completed on time. Then on the other side, how are they doing? We have 17 are in business generating revenue. We have five are actively working for the startup mode. We have three that are in the process of gathering more information. We're very happy with the results of this. Hopefully, you are happy with the results of this, and thank you.
Are there any questions for the speaker? I would say we're just very proud to be able to be helpful. I mean, that sometimes there's a lot of people from Polk County, our community sometimes are, but it's the kind, this is the kind of a program that helps people understand whether they should be in business or whether they should not be in business.
Absolutely.
And both are valuable, are valuable skills, and we've seen the benefit in our community of a number of those folks, those entrepreneurs, and so we really appreciate being part of this.
Thank you.
Additional comments from anyone? Please do.
Do you know which one, which ones of these are in Independence?
I do. There are three. Well, actually, there's one in Independence, and there's two in Dallas. So that's the Polk County region that we have. We have a preschool daycare here in Independence, and we have an Arby business in Dallas, and then we have another business that is still seeking some funding to get started.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else out in the audience who wants us to make public comment on this? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you very much for taking the time to come in this evening. Karen, is there anything else that we have to do related to this?
I do not believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate that. We're going to move on to item B, grant sanitary service rate adjustment request, page 19 in your packet. And I think I'm turning it over to the cell. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Estelle Garland, and for the record, my address is 952 North East in Portland, City, Oregon. I literally blew in, really, really stormy over on the coast, I can attest to that. So we have met with your city manager, with Karen, and your, and I've had communication with your city finance director, and just by way of history, the rate increase effective July 1, 2009, going back to 2009, that was for programs only. And that was for when we set up the yard debris and recycling and the automated cart service. And I go back to 2009 because that was a life changer for, for many of the customers here in Independence, to be able to have that cart service and to get recycling and yard debris in the cart service. And I should point out that all the rates that we refer to are inclusive of that whole package of service. It's not an add-on per recycling or an add-on for yard debris. So the rate that is now being charged or that we're requesting is for all three lines of service. The first overall, or the previous overall rate increase prior to 2009 was 2005. So there was a period in there where we really did not have any increase for programs or operations. The first program or operation increase then after the, after the cards went in was in 2012, and that was an overall increase of 8%. And then we had a special program adjustment of $3.78 for commercial cart recycling. Again, nothing for operations, but we set up the commercial cart recycling in 2013. And that was, that was a very effective program for getting the volume of recycling material out of the waste stream, and the commercial produces so much. So that, that is the history. The financial status is that the last increase was based on year end 2012, and I believe you have my memo in your packet on it. So I would just point out that we were at a plus 0.02 in 2012. If we drop down to pro forma year 2016, we're at 0.03. So we were essentially at zero back in 2012, and then in our pro forma 2016, we're essentially at zero again. I left out in that commentary, the actual 2015, you'll notice that we, we were not positive in 2015, for actual 2015. We were at a minus 0.1. And so we, you'll say, well, you improved a little bit, you know, for your pro forma. Well, it was not for a good reason, and I'm going to come to that in a minute. So the actual year end 2012, the difference between the actual year end 2012 and pro forma 2016, for on the revenue side, is that revenue increased by 9.7%. So we have that 8.8% or 8% increase in this commercial program increase, and so we came up, we increased by 9.7, but unfortunately, costs increased by 9.6 over that period of time, and have put us into, again, a need for a rate adjustment for operations. This, there are some significant impacts on what happened with costs, and now I'm going to discuss why we got slightly better in pro forma in 2016 than actual 2015. And that is because we just simply could not afford to put in depreciation for a truck. I mean, we, things were depreciated, fully depreciated in 2015, some of the equipment. And we were intending to get one new automated truck before June 30 of 2016. Can't do it without some more cash flow. So, so without that depreciation figure being in there, it slightly improved the bottom line. It brought it up to a positive zero essentially. Really, the news is that we've been able to negotiate, Dennis has been able to negotiate a contract with the disposal facility, and we are not going to see a disposal increase now for a year or two. That's very good news. That's the first time, because we have always had, we had 19% between 2012 and, so it's not insignificant, between 2012 and 2016, but going forward, we now have a better contract. So that is, that is very positive. Now, I gave you some figures for some of the larger cost increases, but it's hard to just look at those big numbers and say, well, yeah, but what does that mean to your, to your bottom line? And so today, if you'll pardon me? So this is an exercise that Polk County has to do, and we're in there for disposal, or for rate increases. And it takes the, it takes the amount of the increase, and it says, yeah, but what is that as a percent of the total expenses? And that gives you the effective increase. So that 19% increase in disposal, the effective increase for the bottom line accounted, it accounted for 3.8% of that 9.6% expense increase. Did the same thing on health insurance, general insurance, repairs and maintenance, and salaries. And so we had an effective increase of 12.3% in, over that period between 2012, 2016. We had some, and costs decreased. Fuel was one, and we have that depreciation decrease. Those were the two major ones. So when you factor in all the line items that increased and the ones that decreased, we, it had been a negative impact on the increases of 2.7%, so it brings that 12.3 down to the 9.6 overall increases. And I think this is maybe helpful in seeing how it actually affected, how did we get to this 9.6% of what was revenue, looking at the big numbers of 19% or 32% or 38 or 27 or 15. I hope it's helpful. I'd be glad to answer questions if you, if you have on that.
What is RMM?
Repairs and maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the request is to bring their operating margin to a position that reflects a good business policy for providing this all-inclusive solid waste management service in their cities. Longath did approve this increase last Tuesday night, and the rates are exactly the same there as we're requesting in Independence. This is an across-the-board adjustment of 8%. We were requesting it be effective January 1, 2016, and so this all-inclusive rate would go from $20.55 a month to $22.19 a month, or something well under $2 a month for, for this four-year period. Amounts to less than $2 a month for this four-year period. It seems, and I have attached the rate schedule, I believe it's reasonable, the request, when you look at the CPI, it almost equals the CPI for that same period. And it's also reasonable when you look at the rates in other areas. And the last handout in your packet was a comparative rate summary, where grants, when you look at the cards, are at the low end of the bill for the rates in these other cities. The rates that are, wherever they're lower on cards, there is, there is considerable, considerably higher amount of commercial that helps subsidize in these other cities. If you look at grants, commercial rates, they're, they're very, very low. The only ones that are, are lower than grants are City of Salem, and that's, Salem, as you recall, is divided between Huron County and Polk County, but this is all City of Salem. And they just play, have an economy of scale for the, for the very large commercial there. When you look at drop locks, they're just, brands are just playing the lowest. And so they're, they're, what this essentially means is that because we have, when we came in on the programs, we applied the cost to the programs. When we, when we added cards for the residential curbside solid waste recycling and yard debris, we put it all in that program. We did not try to just spread it across everything and, and increase the subsidy that would be going on from commercial to residential. So brands are very, are, among all the cities, are really about the closest to cost of service, to cost of service of the cities that are surrounding you, because, just because of the way that we have been able to structure the increases in the past. And we're, this time, because we are solo in commercial, we're not just plowing it all in one place or, or another, we are asking for across the board. So we would, I believe we're scheduled to be back on December 22 for, for a decision on this. So tonight was, was the chance to get you information.
So while we have the speakers in front of us, do folks have questions? Please do.
I have one. And from your comments, then can I assume that France is funding a replacement reserve for the, for a new truck?
Mm-hmm.
And it was 2016?
We're hoping to be able to get the new, new automated truck in, later in 2016. It's just that it won't, their year ends on June 30. So when I did the pro forma, I couldn't, the CTA actually always comes up with depreciation. I could not put it into the pro forma.
Does the replacement reserve fully fund the truck, or is it?
No, no, it's great. There will be interest, it'll, it'll be financed.
Additional questions? I'm going to ask staff, Ms. Flora, have you had a chance to take, you know, you're a number person, and have you had a chance to really take a, take a good look in, at this and?
Yes, I did review the financials, and I had some questions, and Estelle and I talked about it, and we went through it, and also looking at the comparative, I, I really appreciated her comparative. I think the overall ask, in my opinion, is reasonable.
Final one, look like a flight in here.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add to terms of the analysis, just that it is in fact scheduled as your only item of business on the 22nd. You're welcome to take this up this evening if you choose to do so. You have the formal resolution handy, and if you choose to do so... You have the formal resolution handy, and if you choose to do so, you will need to ask for a comment. It has been, it has been noticed in our, of course, in our, in our agenda, so that's adequate from, from our city attorney's perspective. Or if you wanted to take the time to give this a little more consideration, hold it over until the 22nd, that's fine as well.
Council members?
I think the information that was provided was, was pretty thorough, it was a great report, and I feel like I have enough information to make decisions on.
I agree with you.
I'm really having this fair.
Yep.
So, but I guess I have to ask, I need to ask if there are any public comment related to this, this town? Karen, am I doing this the right way?
Yes, for public comment, yes.
Okay. I don't see anybody coming related to public comment, related to this, so.
They didn't have to do an official hearing or anything.
I don't think so.
Not aware.
Not aware. Okay, we are providing the opportunity. And it was noticed that this was on the agenda for the, for the evening. If there, if you would like to take action, if someone would so suggest the appropriate action.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I move to approve a resolution granting a rate adjustment to grant sanitary service. Second.
Have a motion, second, is there discussion? Yes, Karen, please.
Can I ask that I do have a resolution in front of you on your screens?
Right.
And rates are normally approved by resolution?
Right.
Can we either read that aloud real fast and approve it that way, or?
I'm sorry.
Read the whole resolution? Yes.
Go ahead, start reading.
Okay. A resolution granting a rate adjustment. A resolution granting a rate adjustment to grant sanitary service incorporated, resolution number 15-1421. Whereas grant sanitary service has requested that an 8% increase to grant for those rates charged for all solid waste management services in the city of Independence and, whereas ordinance number 1475, Section 24 of the Independence City Code states that rates for service shall be approved by resolution of the city council and, whereas an 8% increase in selection rates is justified for providing said franchisee with a reasonable operating margin to the city of Independence, now therefore, the city of Independence results as follows. The rate schedule set forth in Measure A, Incorporated by ordinance hearing, is hereby adopted. The rates herein are not subject to limited implications of Measure 5. Resolution number... Hold on. I thought it was in here. I'm sorry, what's that? The previous resolution, I'm not sure what the number was. The previous resolution adopting the rates for solid waste management services and city utilities is hereby, hereby repealed in its entirety.
Is that what?
That's the date of the annual first, 2016.
Okay, and?
That's the motion.
That's the motion made, and Jerry was, were you the second, or who was the second?
I think it was Tom.
I think it was me.
We're, Marilyn was the man. So, we're okay? All right, is there discussion on this? Is it all okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If I make my one suggestion while I wrap this, it might be, maybe instead of every four years or so, maybe a little bit more, just, it's, it's a number.
That's, that's a point well taken. I think that what influenced us was that we were actually in here on a commercial program in 2013, and we needed to get the numbers to flow into the, and so we only had half of a fiscal year in 2014, and that pushed us into fiscal 2015, but your point is well taken.
I, I think we're, we're all planning, we're trying to move forward good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Great, carefully.
Yes, I'm going to.
Yes, thank you. We now have a real, real property surplus declaration. Mr. Klein, if you can handle this, is that correct? Thank you. Karen, I'm going to need the executive statements to be read, I don't have it at my desk here, so, thank you.
I have one for you.
Okay, thank you. Just kind of preparing.
Oh, I put it in your notes, Dan.
Got it, thank you. So, go ahead, talking about surplus property, please.
So, this is, if you recall, 48 Leans Street is the property that was donated to the city. We have, at one point in time, we approached a neighboring property, in an effort to acquire enough real estate to have a legal building lot. We were disappointed in what would overtake financially to make that happen, so we took Plan B. And Plan B was to go ahead and do the diligence on the property to basically demolish the building, moving hazardous waste, it's limited expense to do so. We've completed that work, the fire department is ready to do a learn-to-learn, the police department's had some training opportunities with the property as well. So, their learn-to-learn is sometime this month, if I have anybody here knows the exact date, but subsequent to that, subsequent to that, we will then look to market property privately, should he choose to, directs us to do so.
Questions, questions for anybody? Are we all okay? All right, somebody would care to take the motion?
I would.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution 15-1420, a resolution declaring tax law number 8421CA09000 as surplus, and authorizing staff to initiate real property surplus proceedings.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Council announcements before we get to the executive sessions. The announcements, I have one in a moment, not announcement, but thank you, but I was going to.
Yes, the parade of lights was small but mighty and eminently successful. And it was fun, that was one of the best things. And we had watchers out in front waiting to see it go by. And the Santa train delivered more than 1,000 gifts. And I would currently suggest that this council consider Cynthia Harabio and the Elks for a good neighbor award.
Sounds like a good idea. Karen, can you make that happen for us, please? Thank you. I would offer also, I wanted to, I was over with Santa Train School, it was pretty interesting. It was, it's just amazing scale of positive energy that was there. So many people, if I start trying to name them all, it's a problem, I misspoke, there's so many folk. The parade was wonderful, as always, and I really want to shout out to some folks that here, that council members and others who helped make a little bit of an independent singe downstairs. And it was fun, there were, when some of us got up to help lead a song, Paul Evans and I were jingling along with us. It was on Facebook, actually. And somebody's grandchildren were very much involved. And so, I just want to say, it was, it was a wonderful thing, I want to thank.
It's on Facebook?
I didn't put it there. I'm scared now. I just want to thank all those people that were involved, was helping make that happen, really appreciate it. It continues to grow. I think having an event like this, as it continues to just evolve over time with what's going on in our community, in not too many years, it's cooked me up pretty big deal, and it's lots of fun already. And I did eat all the cookies already.
Well, there's more cookies in it.
My wife tells me that cookies are not a meal, but they taste so good. So, anyway, are there any other council announcements? Since I hear now, the Independent City Council now meeting executive session on purpose of confirming the city attorney concerning legal rights and duties regarding litigation likely to follow pursuant to ORS 1926602H. Immediately following, city council meeting executive session on purpose of confirming the city labor negotiating pursuant to ORS 1926602D. Immediately following, city council meeting executive session to review the job performance of the city manager pursuant to ORS 1926602I. Representatives, news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session for purposes of immunity. Here are specifically directed, not reported, any deliberations during the executive session. Except to state as general subject, sessions previously announced, no decision made in the executive session. This time, the council will adjourn the conference room for duration, the executive session runs all executive sessions in turn. While returned to open session, the council chambers any, any decisions from our executive session will be deliberated at this time. Objection? Let's go with the back. Let's take a five minute in between for, okay, I call, I'm calling this back to order. We have potential action item here. Mr. Klein, would you help with the proper wording on the ratification of the Teamsters' collective bargaining agreement, please?
Looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the Teamster agreement as tentatively agreed to by all parties.
I'm so moved.
I, I have, I have the answer over here. Karen, do you have the motion?
I do not.
David, could you please restate the motion so the man can say it again, please?
A motion to authorize the city manager to execute the Teamster agreement as tentatively agreed to by all parties dated?
Execute.
November 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second, pick anybody. Is there discussion? I hear no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Is the motion due during all in favor say aye or no.